Yes, we are. Thank goodness. What a week it has been, huh? Hi, Monique.
Hello.
Hey Erin, how are you doing?
I'm good, except I can't see anybody.
Oh, I can see you. Oh, well, wait, I have my video off.
There we go. There we go.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Who is Studio Control Room?
That is Access Humboldt.
Ah, and that's, but it's not David or Monique? Oh, it's, okay.
No, it's actually Access Humboldt. Yeah, it's how they connect the feed. Um, do we have a quorum? We do. All right, let's call, this is the Humboldt County Human Rights Special Meeting, um, called to order Wednesday at 5:05 PM. Um, we're meeting today really for two reasons. One is to give Chair, myself, permission because we want to start working with Access Humboldt. But in order to get, to ask for funding and, and, and to get a contract to get approved by the Commission, we need to be able to sign an MOU around that. I was hoping Bird would be here so she could help. But Eddie, you were in on that conversation. Do you want to add to that, what we're doing and why we need to sign this memorandum of...
Understanding.
Understanding.
Sorry, let me unmute myself first. So yes, so we, the, the, uh, the, uh, Digital Accessibility Committee decided, had a meeting, and then we kind of have moved on and we want to look, we want to have a more professional, better integrated and, and more, uh, in-depth connection with people from Humboldt County. So we've, we've decided we're going to work with Humboldt Access, uh, Access Humboldt, excuse me. Uh, and, um, there are certain things that we are agreeing, that we are agreeing to do, that we will be doing for each other, or Access Humboldt will be doing for the, uh, for the, uh, Human Rights Commission. And in order to do that, we need to have a memorandum of understanding. But before we do that, we need to have, we need to have this meeting saying, hey, this is what we're going to do, and, uh, and move it forward from there. And Lelena, if you want to fill in or anything like that, which I know you do.
Well, this is what we're gonna do. What we're agreeing at right as of right now is that they will air all our regular meetings once a month through, through Access Humboldt and Suddenlink Channel 11. And then what that'll do is it'll initiate a relationship with them. And that cost, we won't know that exact cost until we start working out this contract. But they said that they approximate around $200 to $300 a month. And Commissioner Lockdy felt that that was something, you know, the McLean Foundation has been incredibly supportive. And, you know, what, one of our biggest missions is to educate and promote human rights. And so, and what they support us in is in outreach. And so we feel like that especially with COVID, um, this is a really good request to go to them and, and see if they would support us. But we can't even begin that process until we get some sort of actual contract. And this MOU is exactly what'll help that conversation going. And so I just need permission to sign that so we can start moving forward in that conversation and get the funds. And it would purely be for them partnering with us to air all of our regular meetings on Access Humboldt's network. Um, and then it would allow us to start talking about having our town hall meetings and our listening sessions, or if we wish to do a forum discussion on racism and cultural awareness or homelessness. It would give us easier access to figure out how to make that happen for those, those special, um, events that we wanted to create.
So I think the bottom line is we're going to be requesting to spend money. And since we are part of the county, we have to have this, uh, this meeting in public, and we have to make a motion. So I would, I would make the motion, uh, that we, uh, and it's already in the agenda, that, uh, uh, we, uh, start, uh, having a memorandum of understanding with Access Humboldt, or something along those lines.
What we actually need in that motion, Eddie, if you could just add to that to give the Chair permission to sign the MOU on behalf of the, the...
Sorry, I'm making the, the motion that we give permissions to the Chair to sign the memorandum of understanding between, uh, Access Humboldt and the, uh, Human Rights Commission of Humboldt County.
Do we have a second? Erin? All right, do we have any abstains? Or I'm sorry, let's vote. Do we have a discussion? Sorry. Shall we have a discussion around it? Do you guys have any questions or anything?
Nope.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Erin, I hear your mouth. I see your lips moving.
Righto. Um, I'm kind of looking, is the, is the, I'm sorry, I'm just confused. Has the MOU been written yet? Um, and if so, is there a draft? Okay, so we're just, okay.
And, and I think it's, it's...
That's why it's an MOU.
And we're gonna review it, and then you have to accept the MOU. So we're just saying, hey, this is, she's gonna go talk to this group and write a memorandum, and then we're gonna take a look at it.
Very good.
But that first step, that's what we're doing. So no decisions will be made, with the decision we are making is that there is going to be a memorandum of understanding, and then we have to accept it.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor? Erin Rowe, Eddie Morgan, Monique, and...
Aye.
David and Lelena?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? All right, unanimously, you have given the Chair permission to sign the MOU with Access Humboldt. Thanks a lot, you guys. I think this is gonna make a big difference for us. I, I'm, I'm super excited. Um, the next item on the agenda is protocol for the opening statement.
Oh, yeah. So do you want to discuss that really quick? During our last meeting, we had an opening statement that Bird had written and, and, and talked about. And I think we want to have a motion after we have a discussion that we read that that be on a regular meeting. Is that correct?
Correct. Did everybody get, I don't see any comments or anything in the Google Doc, though.
I added some edits to the Google Doc. I'm pretty sure. I don't know.
Are those edits in there, or did you just edit it? So it's, it's the way you think it should be now? Let me put it on the screen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Show the screen.
Let me share the screen.
I have just added more information to the land acknowledgement.
Okay, let's make sure...
And a label, labor acknowledgement.
Okay. Will you take a look at this, Monique? Because I, I saw your note in the email, and I just want to make sure it got into the right place. Because it's still...
No, it did not. Hold on. I did, it did not. I don't know if it's because I didn't have edit.
Want to send me the link to your, where your edits were done, and then I can put those up on the screen?
Or we could, we could just give it to Monique and, uh, make sure, let's, let's do it. Because she can do the, and she can put the comments. You hit the little plus sign and on the sign, then we can, and then we can resolve them and, and accept them. So is that your cursor, Monique?
No, I have to open it on my regular, on my computer, so just give me a moment. Sorry.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Take your time. Take your time.
Here, I'll read it again, since we are on air.
Yes.
And then we can read any changes that we make to it. So we, we wanted to, now that we are kind of like as a commission on air, we, we want to use this opportunity to also educate and show where we stand as a commission. So we have decided to create an opening statement to our meetings. And that's what we're discussing right now. And you'll see, as I read along, Monique is making some changes. Um, and, and we'll read that to you again once that's done. But as it stands right now, what we're looking at is we acknowledge that the land on which we are gathered today is ancestral territory of the Wiat people, surrounded by the traditional and ancestral homelands of other indigenous nations, including the Hoopa, Karuk, Matol, Talawa, Walaki, and Urok that make up Humboldt County. We come with respect, respect and gratitude to the tribes. We thank and honor the indigenous caretakers of this land who continue to cherish and protect it as the elders have instructed the young through generations. And we continue to protect the rights of the land and all the people who live on it. The Humboldt County Human Rights Commission is a county commission of volunteers appointed by the Board of Supervisors. The purpose of the Commission is to aid in the eradication of discrimination in the county against, in cases of employment, public services, and housing, race, religious creed, nation, national origin, ancestry, physical or mental disability, marital status, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, civil unrest, or other factors.
What's it supposed to mean? I'm sorry.
I think I read it wrong.
Civil unrest?
I think, I, I mean, I would imagine that it means that, you, I mean, I feel it means that, that we need to maintain our unbiasedness no matter what. And we've had civil unrest, you know, in a sense.
That's just not the right term. I think we should remove that personally.
Okay.
It's not clear enough to keep...
Will you, will you add that in there so we can...
Uh, who, who are you talking to?
Can you, are you in on the, I'm in on the file. I'll, I can remove it. Does, or how does, shall we remove it?
Well, I think, I think the proper thing to do is, is like Monique did. She put the comment on the side there so that way we can see, and then we can accept it.
Okay.
There's not, then, you know, you, you, people could argue that, oh, you know, you're being a little, you know, because it's a lot of stuff there.
Uh, I'm sorry, so you're wanting this in the, in the chat? The changes in the chat? Eddie, is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah, on the document, like, like, uh, like Monique did and like the Lelena is doing.
On the document. I can put it in a chat, but I don't know how to put it on the document. Wait a minute, where are you? Uh... I don't know how to do that.
Oh, it didn't work.
So yeah, just, you see the little plus? The, go to the plus thing. Go up, Lelena, go up like Monique did. Go up, 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 to the left, go left.
Yeah, I'm try, oh, I know what I'm doing. Okay, that's what I'm doing. Okay.
So, yeah, okay, there you go.
But I'm not wanting to add a comment. I'm wanting to make a suggestion. There we go. Oh. There we go.
Um, okay, and I, another request, um, take or leave this. And the, the first paragraph seems a little long to me. Um, I, I would propose, we come to, come with, with respect and gratitude to the tribes.
Thank you, Monique.
Because is this whole thing you wrote your edit?
Yes.
Okay, let me copy what Monique just put and put it down, and then I'll read that. Um, and maybe we'll, that'll get us further faster.
Yeah, it might need edits, so reading it out loud, we might hear those.
Okay. And if we have to put this towards for our next meeting, we, we do, but...
Yeah.
That's okay, too.
Because I, I feel bad that Bird's not here.
I, I do, too.
She, she's the one that initiated, so, uh, but I, I don't know, I could, that's, that's up to you.
Well, why don't we do this? Because we have another meeting in like 10 minutes, um, for the Kindness Committee. Why don't we push this until the, the, the next, till our next meeting? And we can go over what Mo, because we didn't have Mo's edits, and Bird hasn't seen Mo's edits. Um, and she'd be really good at helping us edit that really well. Um, and I want to make sure that this information gets in because it looks like there's some good, good additions in there, Mo. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with that. Okay.
Would you like me to read this out loud, Commissioners? Or should we just postpone? How would you like me to move forward?
I think we should postpone. That's, that's, I would postpone. That's my thought.
Agreed.
All right.
Monique's agreeing. David, do you have a thought? David, do you agree?
No, that's fine.
All right, so, um, I will move to close today's special meeting. Think, oh, wait, wait, can we hold that note? Can we hold that thought? Bird is, is here.
Oh, wow.
Hi, Bird.
Hi, Bird.
You're all muted, Bird.
I realize. I've been waiting and waiting. What happened?
You just popped in. I just saw you.
I've been waiting for, what, I got on, I was two minutes late getting on.
Okay, can you, I'm gonna put up, um, Mo just made some really great additions to your, um, opening statement.
So I'm... Just to be, you know, because we just made a decision. So we, we should, this, just because we're being recorded and we're live and everything like that, I think we should at least explain what we're doing right now. If we're, if we're gonna continue doing it, because we are live. So I just take that in consideration.
So we, we just decided to push this forward to the next meeting. Want, because you weren't, you weren't here, and we really wanted to...
And this is the statement, that, the initial statement that we want to do at the beginning. Sorry about that, Lelena.
And, 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 oh, I see what you're saying, Eddie, because we're on live. Um, and so we're looking at the new opening statement that honors the tribal lands and also helps share how to work with the Commission. And Mo made some great additions to it. And we were just getting ready to close the meeting and move forward and postpone it. Um, but if you would like to review it right now quickly, with your expertise, we probably could approve it tonight.
I, I would like to if, if, if we can. I, I don't know what happened, but I've just been waiting for 20 minutes to come on.
Okay, can you see this?
Whoever the host of the meeting was should have kept an eye on the waiting room, I guess.
It didn't pop up on my screen until I let her in.
Okay, it's water under the bridge, water under the...
Oh, I know why. It's because I am sharing the screen and I can't see people when they join.
Ah, okay, well, um, what I'm seeing is, um, the responsibilities. Oh, I see. They changed it and, and rearranged it. Okay.
Yeah, this is, hold on, let me make sure I put it in there right.
Yeah.
Hold on, no, no, no.
No. Get back to the top of it for me.
It, it's because I copied and pasted it.
Okay.
Here we go. Wait, Mo, is there a part missing?
Let me get, and I'm still in the doc.
Okay, if you, yeah, let Mo organize it, because I feel like I'm making it a mess.
It basically, what I, the comment I added ultimately just goes at the end of what we already have. It's tacking onto it.
So the one that says we would like to recognize and respect?
And that tacks on where?
At the top, after who live on it.
Okay, so, so you left the, so the first part that we have is there, we're just adding to it.
Yes, there needs to be an action and information provided. Otherwise, our, our land acknowledgement is performative and empty.
Yes, thank you. Um, that's what I was hoping would happen, that we would get some good input. So thank you so much, Mo. Okay.
Thank you, Mo.
So it's over here on the side that you're, can you scroll a little so I can see where, what you added?
So I just copied everything that she added. Bird is in gray.
Well, it's not showing up really well that way, but, um, there, yeah, okay.
That's what she added.
Yeah, okay, good.
And I like the idea of just reading it out loud, because some of it may repeat. I ultimately just took my own land acknowledgement and added it.
After Bird looks it over, then I'll read it out loud so we can determine if we're gonna move forward with it or not. But let's get it, make sure it's edited well. So, so, like, because I do, I just, you, you mentioned that, and I want to make sure we're all dialed in.
That's great, Mo. I think you did a great job. Yeah, that look, it looks very good to me. And, and the other two paragraphs are the same? As we had before?
Yes.
Yeah.
Except for there is one change that Erin suggested, which was remove civil unrest.
Um, okay, but it's in our policy that it's there. I copied that.
What does it mean that we don't discriminate in cases of civil unrest?
I...
I think it means we don't, don't pick sides.
Yeah, yeah, Bird, because, and, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Bird or Lelena or anybody. Because, you know, we, in, in past meetings, we were, you know, like, especially with the, uh, uh, with the observer force, uh, there, there was a lot of, uh, talk about, uh, being fair observers. So if somebody is in, engaged in civil unrest, uh, uh, we can't, we can't be biased against it. It's, uh, and I think that's where we're coming from. But that's, that's a very, especially today's world, what happened recently, that kind of gives it a different aspect. I totally understand that. But in the past, like with, let's say, environmentalists wanted to, to protest and do, uh, uh, we'd have, you know, so that's, I think that's where that's coming from. One, especially with the environmentalists giving unrest or something of that nature.
Yeah, I, I think that's what it was for.
Uh, yeah, but I'm, that's just not the right word. Um, I would recommend political preference or political party or something.
Okay, I mean, that's fine, then, let's do it here and then we'll fix it in our policies as well. As part of the, um, the, the motion, that we use that, that we, um, substitute political...
Preference or party or something, leanings, whatever.
Political... I think preference is a, is a better word than party, just because...
Political preference is good, I think. Does that work, Erin?
Yes.
Yes, and then, um, if we are going to have a motion to approve this, uh, as part of that motion, we have, um, that substitution in our policy as well.
I like that. Okay, would you like me to read this through?
Yes.
All right.
Good idea.
We, if not, again, this is a new opening statement for the Human Rights Commission. As we're now on all this digital world, we want to make sure that we're taking every opportunity to educate and help state what our values are as a commission and how you are able to work with us. So that's what this statement is about. Um, and it was primarily authored by Bird Lockdy and Mo Harper Desire. Thanks, ladies. "We acknowledge that the land on which we are gathered today is ancestral territory of the Wiat people, surrounded by the traditional and ancestral homeland of other indigenous nations, including the Hoopa, Karuk, Matol, Talawa, Walaki, Urok, and Urok that made up Humboldt County. We come with respect and gratitude to the tribes. We thank and honor the indigenous caretakers of this land who continue to cherish and protect it as elders have instructed the young through generations. And we continue to protect the rights of the land and all people who live on it." The Humboldt County Human Rights Commission. What happened?
We lost something.
We lost something.
We lost Mo's. Uh-oh. No, there, keep going, keep going. There it is.
Okay.
Isn't that, there it is, yeah.
All right, that's what comes next. "We would like to recognize and respect, recognize and respect these indigenous people as the traditional stewards of this land and start to support the enduring relationship that exists between indigenous communities and their traditional lands. We encourage direct giving to tribes and native-led efforts, most especially the tribes and nations in Humboldt County. We make this land acknowledgement in recognition that our words must be matched by action and approach. Please learn from Dr. Kutcher Riesling Baldly's lecture, 'What Good is a Land Acknowledgement.' We also recognize and acknowledge the labor upon which our count, our country, state, and institutions are built, was on the labor of enslaved people who were kidnapped and brought to the US from African continent, from the African continent, and recognize the continued contribution of their survivors. We acknowledge all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, and trafficked peoples who we continue to serve within our labor force. Be sure to support your local BIPOC initiatives directly. The Humboldt County Human Rights Commission is a county commission of volunteers appointed by the Board of Supervisors. The purpose of the Commission is to aid in the eradication of discrimination in the county in cases of employment, public services, and housing, race, religious creed, color, nation, origin, ancestry, physical or mental disability, marital status, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, I'll add in there, political preference or other factors. The Commission's responsibilities include investigating complaints of human rights violations, recommending possible remedies, educating county residents about human rights, gathering information and opinions from residents, making recommendations to the county Board of Supervisors, and presenting an annual report of commission activities in the state of human rights in the county to the Board of Supervisors."
So we are gonna read this statement at the beginning of every meeting. That's our intent, because it, it seems a little long to me.
Well, it, it, I agree that it seems long, but part of what our discussion was with Sean is we also need to use this as an opportunity to educate in a lot of, we have a lot of educating to do. Um, and part of that is how we work as a commission. You know, we're, a lot of people don't understand how we work. Um, I think we do need to... I think we do need to add to this at the end, our phone number and email address.
Do we feel that we really need to have the name of the professor there? That seems to be kind of a narrow scope.
The, the whole point is to provide information and education so people can further understand why we do land acknowledgements and they're not going around doing empty ones. And like performative allyship. There should be like knowledge gained around the importance of a land acknowledgement. So tying in where you can, how you can give, why you should give, and where you can get more information is crucial.
I understand that, but as a blanket statement from the commission to highlight one person when we really do need to represent the whole, it does make me a little uncomfortable. You know, should we have a conversation around that? I, I get, I totally get what Mo is saying, but I also feel like as a county body.
Yeah, I mean, you can take it out, just be mindful that you need to point people back to the, the, you know, indigenous people that are setting forth this education. So we don't have to specify, but.
So how could we change that, Mo, do you think, so we could still do that without pointing out one particular person?
I guess just say, you know, revert back to your own local indigenous tribes for more education on what a land acknowledgement is.
Or maybe we could just, must, words must be matched by action and approach. And we don't need to cite any, anybody particular after that.
That's what I would suggest, but does that, does that help? Or does that destroy what you're trying to say, Mo?
I just think we need to point people to their own indigenous communities versus not. So you can take out the name and such.
Can we say?
But I think we just need, need to have that being the point of reference.
Can we say in this other, the, the paragraph in, above that, we're supporting the relationships. We're recognizing, respecting, supporting the relationships, encouraging direct giving. And then we encourage, how do you say, you said it before, Monique, encourage learning from the tribes. How did you say that before?
You can do simply learn more from your own local indigenous communities.
Yes, yeah, we encourage the direct giving and we encourage individuals to learn about, from, from the, from the local indigenous communities. Can we?
Could we say, as well as encourage, oh gosh, look at the whole world's gonna see me and my dyslexia. Oh no, as well as encourage peoples to learn, what was that?
Directly from their local, local indigenous communities.
Yes, and that's not a new sentence. There's a comma after Humboldt County and, as is not a capitalized.
Why am I doing this, you guys? I'm having a little panic attack up here.
No, no, you're doing great.
You're doing very good, Lelena. You're doing very good.
As, as well as encourage people, take out that S.
Okay, let me get this word out first. Okay. How's that?
Could we, from their local indigenous, what, indigenous tribes?
Communities.
Community, good, yes.
All right, do you guys want me to read it again before we?
There's, there's another question I'd like to bring up. You know, we, at the, at the top, we talk about elder and young people. I think that could be mistaken, I mean, elder people have made lots of mistakes. And just to think that we can only learn from the elder, I think is, is wrong. I mean, I can think of all baby boomers and all that aspect. I don't know how I feel about that.
I, I think, so, I, I, I'm not native, but I, I, just from going to school on the lands, I really think that that is such a big part of how tribal culture works. We need to do more of that, frankly. I found that line actually really special because of that. But I do understand what you're saying. However, it is how tribal, even modern day tribal traditions pass on their IP, their legacy, their information.
Yeah, yeah, and I like to point out that we don't have anybody, except for you, Lelena, that grew up, that was a member of, or grew up on, that we don't have anybody representing, or that is a member of the tribes up here.
We don't have, what you're trying to say, I think, Eddie, is that none of our commissioners that are actually tribal members are.
Exactly, thank you, thank you. That's exactly what I'm trying to say, and I know that run, you know, like gets into trouble. Because if I were a tribal member, like, oh, that was really good that all these people from Monique got together and decided this.
Right, right, well.
And hold this respect to anybody that wrote this. Bird, I'm not being, and the same thing with Monique, I'm just, I'm being a little bit.
No, I, I, I think you're bringing up a good point. The problem is, is that as, you know, this small body of commissioners, we have to get it done and we can change this. If someone from the tribe comes to us and say this is totally inappropriate, you know, we're only here to listen and figure out how to make things better. So we can change this and, and maybe Carol or Lisa will have some input and we can, you know.
That's a good argument, that's a good argument.
But I think we need.
Anybody, I, I have one last question and this, I had this even when I wrote this. Because some of this came from another one that I, you know, from another group that I've been working with. The first part, scroll back down.
The first part or the part?
Yeah, right there, there, where it says, including Hoopa, Karuk, Matol, Talawa, Waialaki, and Yurok. Are we leaving anybody out that's going to be really upset? Because I know there are Wiat in Bear River, but I think there are other tribes represented there and I'm not sure. I, I don't want to have us listing a lot of people and leaving one out somehow.
Right.
So does anybody know?
I think we're missing the Sankion and the La Sank, La Sack, excuse me.
So here's what I, as we bring that up, you guys, I feel like with what Eddie said and with that bird, that what we really need to do is postpone this and ask Lisa and Carol to take a good look at it.
Yeah, okay, and what I would really think about doing there is maybe not, not naming any others, but to say, and all other tribes that have, that make up Humboldt County. So I, I think that's something, then, then we're not leaving anybody out. And we are actually on Wiat land. That's why we're naming them.
So how, so give me the actual words to do that. Oh, Mo's in there. Mo's gonna do it for me.
Yes, thank you. And just, and all other indigenous nations that make up Humboldt County. That's all we need to say and then, then that includes everybody.
Why did it?
No, she, she's doing good, she's doing good.
Wait, will you undo that? Are you just?
I was like, wait, what did I?
I think it deleted it.
I can't get it back.
No, you cannot.
I was trying to put it in there for you, Mo. Sorry about that.
Oh, I thought, I thought that was Mo that did that. Sorry about that.
No, it was me.
And maybe what we should do, Lelena, is say that we, this is the written final draft that we would like to present to the meeting in February for the total commission to approve it. And then that gives everybody a chance to read it and perhaps, I mean, when we have a motion, you can always make more changes.
Okay, that, that sounds like a good idea.
And then, and then it could be written properly so that it's all in the right order and with all the changes made and not any of the things we took out showing.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
So Lelena, just so, when, when we do the emails, just make sure you put the link so we're all going to the same document.
Yes. Okay, so then what are we, what we're doing is actually postponing the motion.
That is correct.
And leaving this as a draft for the rest of the commission to read over and, and we'll talk about it on the next agenda.
Yes.
All right, then how about we close the meeting? I think we're done.
Well, can I just say again, thank you, Mo. I particularly like what you added about all enslaved people because that is something that is being ignored in ways that it should not be ignored. So thank you very much for all the changes that you suggested.
And Mo, I also like to add the fact you stated about immigrants, you know, different immigrants coming to the area, about the ages. So yes, I agree with that.
So now you can.
Excellent job, Mo. Excellent job, Bird. It, it, I, I, I do feel, it feels really inclusive and like we're hitting some things that we need to take advantage of talking about. All right, so it is 5:45 and I would like to close this human rights special meeting. Thank you very much, everybody, for participating and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
So Erin, you and I need to stay on.
Okay.
Because we have a kindness, oh wait, no, you're not on the kindness committee.
I could be.
Ah, yeah.
I don't know, maybe I can't. If there are too many people there.
I would like you, well, I, I, we, we've got two other people on there, but let's see what happens. They, they haven't shown up and we gotta vote you on. But, um, I guess we're not, it's not gonna happen, so I will, oh, oh, relax. All right, we'll see you later, woman. Bye.
Very good, bye.